What does that sound? Good? We have a sound system tonight. Thank you very much, Rich, to hopefully help everybody hear us a little bit better through our masks. So we will see how that goes tonight. And let's start with a roll call, please. Allison.
Mike Block.
Here.
Aaron Hamidal.
Here.
Carrie Church.
Here.
Tom Coons.
Here.
Shelley Leonard. Here.
Okay, let's stand for the pledge.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
We have any comments from visitors this evening to start it off? No? Okay. First on our agenda this evening is the consent calendar, which is comprised tonight of the minutes from our September 9th board meeting and our enrollment numbers. It's a pleasure, the board.
I'm moved that we accept them as written.
We have motion from Mike, second from third. All in favor? You say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay, let's move on to announcements and superintendent's update.
Thank you. Always a little intimidating when I use a microphone. Hopefully, everyone can hear me. Okay. I have a couple of updates that I wanted to share tonight. First, I want to officially welcome Shelley, leading to the board. Great to have you here. I know there's always paperwork and everything that you fill in. Hopefully, you've got your iPad. Hopefully, you're all set. If there's anything you need, please let us know. So we've continued to work through the IT migrations. I think I talked about this in August. And some of the challenges that we've had, as Rich knows, we keep breathing and we make a little bit of progress and then we take a step back and we make a little more progress. I think we're getting closer every day, as Allison knows as well. You know, the SAU has provided some support to her as we migrated to Power School. We have a consultant that works with the SAU named Sue Johnson that has come down and helped out. Just nothing with IT is simple. And she's been really helpful, I think, in helping Allison, you know, as we migrated again to the new Power School system. And, you know, because all of that ties into the state reporting that we do every year. And this is the big week for state reporting. Everything is due, certified and everything tomorrow. So again, I want to thank Allison for her efforts in that work because it's a lot of work. But anyway, I wanted to mention, I know there's been some challenges with Blackboard Connect. And I know we've set up training for next week that Rich and others will be participating in. So hopefully, people can be a little more patient as we're trying to make sure that everyone's in the right place and they're getting the right calls and all of that. So again, thanks to Rich for continuing to problem solve and work through all of that. So one of the things, there's a couple of things I wanted to mention that are on the agenda and we'll get into more detail about. We have included a policy on residency. And I was, this came up because I've worked through a few issues with residency with Marshwood. And, you know, I said, well, usually what we do, whether it's like conflict or questions or anything, I go back to look at what's the board policies. Well, there wasn't one. So that's why that's included too. It's a new policy. It's been on the books for a long time, reflected in the law. And we can talk a little bit more about that. But I think it will help add some clarity in the conversations, particularly when we have students that moved to Rollinsford that did not go through RGS. That's where we start to, it gets a little challenging sometimes about, you know, what information they need to provide and who verifies all of that. So hopefully, this language will help to navigate some of those challenges that we've had. I'm also looking forward to the conversation that we're going to have in a bit about the capital improvement plan and looking forward to, you know, whether, what we can possibly do to continue to upgrade the facility and using the federal funds. We do need to submit that use of funds plan, so I'm looking forward to the conversation about that. And then I know Rich is going to do some more particular updates around COVID, but I just want to thank the staff, the students and the families for adhering to the established protocols. I know this is not easy. Some of you, I think, received an email from Marshwood today talking about Sanford and how they went back, their career tech center went back to remote learning today and tomorrow. It's out there and we're hearing about it all over the place. And the fact that we're able to stay in and keep things going here with little disruption, I think, is a testament to everybody. So I, again, I know it's not easy. You know, I look at Gail because I know she deals with a lot of folks and it's not always, there's challenges with that. But again, you know, we just want to thank everyone for their efforts.
That's my report. Thank you, Lori. Next, we have our principals' report.
I'll touch on some of the items in my report in the packet, but...
Rich, do you want them?
I don't know. Sitting in front, it'll probably give feedback. Can you all hear?
I can hear.
Okay. I'll try to keep speaking up. Yeah, one of the things that I don't think any of us anticipated, to piggyback off of Lori, is the technology pieces with the transition. The transition that SAU wanted for our building has been seamless. You know, the new administration has been very supportive by them over a couple of times to meet that last week to start our budget discussions. So those types of transitions are very easy and going well. It's just been a nightmare with the technology. Fortunately, we can communicate with families now, but the system is different, the alert system is. So emergency calls that go out to all of our families and all of the addresses and phone numbers, I haven't quite figured that piece out yet because we haven't had the training. There are people that are in the system that no longer go to school here or no longer work here, try to remove them within a week or years. So just some different things going on. That's one example. And, you know, Allison's trying to do examples with Power School. And Gail is working on our healthcare system. It'll all get there. It's just, you know, that's been the piece that I don't think any of us anticipated with this transition. So for those that are not getting alerts, I apologize. Hopefully, by the end of next week, we'll have it all figured out and I'll know what I'm doing a little bit better than what I have done. In my report, I just want to talk about a couple of things. We, the kids, I think, I've got a parent newsletter going out tomorrow. One of the things that I mentioned is early in the year, there was student fatigue because a six and a half hour day is tough after a year and a half of, you know, three to four hour days. Most of our kids were done formal lessons around noon time. Some had maybe one lesson in the afternoon. Some may have had independent work in the afternoon, very remote learning. So that early year fatigue was there. We could tell the stamina for participating in formal school was tough, but it didn't take long. You know, the kids are doing great. I go into the classrooms, 2:30, quarter three in the afternoon, and, you know, teachers are still, you know, getting in those last few lessons before the bell rings. And the kids are doing much better now that they're into routine and they've figured out that, you know, they've got those afternoon classes this year. Something that we didn't predict, but it was very, you could tell early in the year that it was tough for the kids to sustain that long. We've had some excursions outside of the school. We started our walking field trips back to the library again. The town library reached out. They were great about saying they would reserve the time just for us. So we've got five classrooms participating in a monthly walk. It gives kids a chance to see what's available in their community, sign our books, and hopefully, you know, make that a family event throughout the month. We have had one field trip off of campus. Our fourth grade class went to the Brown Center, which is an all-outdoor field trip. It's a team building cooperative that they've done for a number of years. The kids followed school protocols while there. The Brown Center follows the protocols that the school has that shows up. So if it's a school with no mask mandate, then, you know, that's our option for kids there. But we have mask mandates, so our kids were expected to wear the masks while they were there this season. But other than that, the indoor field trips, we're sort of saying no right now. There's just too much going on and we don't want our kids going out and possibly being exposed to members of the public on a school activity. Let's see. Teaming with the PTO for their first fundraiser of the year, we're doing a fun run. They had started to set this up prior to the pandemic with Mr. Franks. And other schools locally have done it and raised a lot of money. So we connected this summer, the PTO and I did, about getting this rolling this fall before the snow flies. Kids raise money. They give donations either a flat donation or a donation on how many laps they complete. So I've set up a two-tenths-of-a-mile course around our fields that we're going to do in a couple of weeks during today's class. Kids will get information tomorrow in their class from me and then I've got an alert ready to go out to families with the information so that any families who are interested in having their kids fundraised can register them. It's an online program that they, you know, register their child. We don't register any of the kids. It's parent permission only. If they choose to raise funds, that's great. If they choose not to, they still get to participate because it's a regular phys ed class. Works well for me because we're doing physical fitness over the next two to three lessons. So this will be our endurance lesson where kids get to choose whether they run, they jog, speed walk, or just take a leisurely walk. But we're going to try to work on endurance during that lesson. Should be a fun day. And then the last piece that I just want to talk about are some of the health updates. I'm sure Gail will chime in at the end of the meeting if I miss anything. But this year's been, I think, as challenging, if not more challenging in some ways, because we have all of the kids every day, whereas most of last year was either remote or we'd have two or three classrooms at a time. So the management piece has been just as challenging this year. We've had a little bit of a struggle when staff has had to be out with symptoms or for other reasons. We do have probably six consistent subs, but they're not always available every day. So we've had a couple of days where we've had to cover within or, you know, not fill a role because we just don't have the personnel. But overall, we're one of the lucky schools in New Hampshire. We're fully staffed, other than a part-time custodian. If you go on any of the educator websites, schools are listing, you know, tons of positions that are older than that. So we are extremely fortunate. We've got staff in the flu shot clinic set up for next week. Staff will be on next Tuesday, students next Friday. Any parent who wishes their child to have a flu shot here at school can register their child. We sent that information home, I think, last week. And we're still accepting registrations right up until the day it eludes. There's a lot of students and staff with fall cold symptoms. And we knew this was going to happen. And it's challenging to explain to families that, you know, if these are symptoms that mirror COVID symptoms, then they need to go home. And we recommend that you get them tested so that if it's not COVID, they can come back as soon as they feel better. Family's been great, reaching out to Gail, mostly Gail this year. Last year was a combination of both of us, but most people are reaching directly out to her about, you know, questions that they might have, what type of tests should they get, where's the best locations to get tests. So for the most part, it's gone very well. It's just keeping up with it. You know, Gail does a nice job of keeping a list of who's out and who's returned negative tests. Hopefully, that type of situation continues because we've only had two positive cases since the beginning of the year that we're aware of. And then the last thing in the packet that I included was the reopening plan. And I just want to pull up the page. There, we needed to clarify something. On page 14, we had a section called exemption from quarantine, but most of the language in that section dealt with travel situations. So after people were vaccinated and 14 days beyond vaccination, then they didn't need to quarantine from travel. But we didn't have anything about close household contacts. So what we added is directly from the language that we get from the state and from the CDC. And it's just, you know, a couple of sentences that say, close household contacts of someone diagnosed with COVID-19 are not required to quarantine if they are fully vaccinated. However, in accordance with the guidance from the CDC, for people who are fully vaccinated, those people are recommended to get tested three to five days following their exposure or a face mask in indoor public settings for 14 days. Or at least until they receive a negative test result. So we have had a couple of those situations because we've had some positive cases. Maybe not positive cases in our building, but positive cases in families outside of our building. So if they're children, obviously, if they're not vaccinated, if they've had contact, then unfortunately, they still have to quarantine. If it's a staff member that is vaccinated, then they don't necessarily have to quarantine as long as a negative test comes back. So that's basically what that language says. It allows some flexibility to vaccinated folks to continue to come to school. That's everything I have for my report. I know the board has readocked the plan every time we've made changes. I don't know if you want to continue that pattern or...
Does anyone have any questions or comments about that change that Rich is talking about here on page 14?
Can you hear me? Oh, this is fine. Yeah, my question, when I look at that paragraph, I think it's good. Just one thing, you know, says someone diagnosed with COVID-19 are not required to quarantine if they are fully vaccinated. It doesn't say anything about remaining asymptomatic in that paragraph. So is that just implied or can we add asymptomatic? Because if they're fully vaccinated, they start to have symptoms, they still need to quarantine.
Correct. In a different section of the reopening plan, anyone with symptoms, vaccinated or unvaccinated, is required to stay at home or provide a negative test. So this specific language... I understand what you're saying, Mike. If there's other language in our reopening plan that addresses that.
Okay. I guess, I mean, is it easy enough just to put that in there? That says as long as they remain asymptomatic? Because a lot of times what you see is people read the paragraph that they think applies to them and they don't, you know, read the rest of the document.
True.
I don't know. I don't know how everybody else feels, but I think it's as easy as just putting that wording in there. That's my take. I don't like this microphone thing.
Yeah, I don't think it would hurt to put that in there and just be a little redundant against other sections, but just like you said, people can get all the information at once. Any other questions or comments?
I mean, I don't love it personally. I know we've been here before when we discussed it in the beginning. I think that if you're in close contact, especially continuously, because you're living in the same hospital as someone who has COVID-19, that you should quarantine. But I understand that these are the CDC guidelines and that it hasn't caused an issue in the past and that there could potentially be traffic issues if everybody has to quarantine. But that was just my personal thought. Hopefully, everybody can hear this, right?
Do I, do I speak? I can speak at the end? I write a note?
You can speak now.
So you don't just do nothing then? If you don't quarantine, you have to self-absorb, self-observe. So you definitely need to check yourself every day, still masking. It's like a light quarantine. So it's not like you just went, oh, I don't have to do this and that. You still really have to watch yourself.
Thank you. I would imagine, Gail, that people are reaching out to you with these types of questions and you're able to give them...
I have references. I email them right from NHDHS, what self-observing needs to do, what quarantine needs to do, travel guidance when people are traveling. This is what you need to do. Yeah, I'm always emailing them.
It does sound like the community has been really worried about this, so I appreciate that.
Absolutely, so much. It's fatiguing beyond what we ever expect. Really good.
Thank you for that clarification. I have one other question, Rich, for you on the very beginning of the reopening plan under phase four, so that's page three, is still talking about remote instruction and remote learning. And I thought we had agreed to strike that.
You are correct. I would strike that, Rich.
So it's just a side note. But I think we can vote now to accept the amended plan. And was there any further questions or discussion?
Do you want me to reread the phrase that Mike recommended?
Sure.
So it's the initial sentence in that blue section, not required to quarantine if they are fully vaccinated as long as they remain asymptomatic.
Does that follow from the script?
Yeah, I motion that we accept the plan with the changes.
Is there a second? Yeah, it's in our packet, which you should have.
I didn't get it.
You didn't get it.
I only got some minutes from the agenda so far.
It's in the same, it's in the same file with the minutes. You just have to scroll away now. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Rich, for your report. And it's great to hear that things are going well. I understand it's extremely challenging.
No, it's good.
And we definitely appreciate all your hard work and Gail, your hard work, just on ongoing basis. I really hope that, you know, as they're promising that tests will be more readily available and hopefully vaccines for younger kids come along, hopefully that will make some of that a little bit easier. And at the same time, it's great to hear that the kids are doing these outdoor field trips and, you know, getting back into their routines and their activities and enjoying it. It's just fantastic to hear. So thank you very much.
Rich, I do have one question for you. When you mentioned the part-time custodian, I know we've been talking about that for quite some time. How long has that been vacant?
Since it was placed in the budget a year and a half ago.
So we've never filled it since it's been placed in there?
We've had a couple of applicants that just weren't right for the position. And it's been consistently advertised the entire time and still haven't been able to find anybody. We're similar to a lot of other businesses in that respect. It's a part-time position, no benefits, so it's going to be tough to fill.
Is it, does it affect the operation of the school at all or do you see a downside to it right now?
The focus we've had on school days is clean, you know, making sure that it's a clean building for the next morning. So our full-time custodian isn't able to do some of those extra things that normally a 20-hour-a-week person would do. In addition, our facilities director does all of the lawn care, all of the outside stuff, which is part of his responsibility. But at certain times of year, when it's prevalent, it chews up a lot of his time where he could be working on other types of projects. So it would be great to have the 20-hour. It would take the pressure off the two of them and, you know, some of the little things that, you know, get put off for a little while can start getting done. But, you know, the important stuff is getting done.
Okay, thank you. Is there anything that we as a board can do to help you out or just keep reposting and see how it goes?
If you know a hard worker who's interested in 20 hours a week that would work well at RGS, would love to be having to send my way.
Thanks, Rich.
Have we advertised it on any of the sort of non-educational job boards?
The SAU.
That might be...
I'm not sure.
Because I haven't seen it.
At jobs in school spring, that's what we usually advertise everything. I mean, do the tribes and the fosters, maybe?
Yeah, I wouldn't say fosters, but maybe Indeed or Monster.
Yes, not per usual.
I know we need it, you know, we need a specific type of person to be able to work in the school, so it makes sense to advertise on the school boards. But if you're not having any luck sometimes by widening the reach a little bit, you might reach some other people, you know, who are looking for some part-time hours. Any other questions before we move on? Okay, great. Now we're up to the exciting capital improvement plan draft.
Lori and I are going to actually do 5.1 and 5.2 together at some point. I'll start with the CIP and then we'll move into the 5.2 because they're very related. So if I can do it. Can everybody hear me if I don't use the microphone?
Yes.
Just because I like to talk with my head and chuck my head myself. All right, so to start with the CIP, last month, Lori, Rich, Chuck and myself completed a walkthrough of the building just to look over the different projects and look over the CIP that we created in 2019 to do some updates. So we walked the building and discussed the projects and we came up with a few next steps. So we wanted to contact Amy Clark, who's with the Department of Education. She handles all the building aid and the federal funds for building projects. So she can come and tour the facility. We also wanted to contact Mike Davy from EEI. He's the one that did the proposal last, I think, this time last year for the HVAC and the upgrades to the building. We also wanted to contact Peter Mischu to discuss the building, the history on the historical registry and determine what projects we could do to the building and different, you know, and how that affected the historical registry. We talked about the annex bathrooms and building those into FY23 budget, doing repairs to these bathrooms down here. We're placing the fixtures, replacing the stalls and doing upgrades of the bathrooms there. The secure entrance was on the CIP. We wanted to remove that because that part has been, that project has been completed. The secure entrance was on the CIP. We wanted to remove that because that part has been, that project has been completed. And then we discussed adding the projects that EEI did identify in their proposal for the HVAC, the boilers, ventilation, all of that. And then Rich took us outside to the side ramp at the end of the building. There's some repairs that need to be done there. So we put in the packet a revised list of the CIP. We didn't add any costs to this list yet. We are still trying to gather those costs and figure out where we can place them and which year if you want to place them. But we wanted to give you an idea of the projects that we were anticipating. So again, on this list, we added boiler replacement, the air ventilation system, the PDC controls that go along with that system, added insulation and new ceilings, the window replacement in the gym in the main building, the roof replacement of the main building. Like I said, the annexed bathroom renovations and the repairs to the ramp on the side entrance. So those are the projects that we're considering for the CIP. We did contact Amy Clark and she did come to the building on September 27th. Rich, myself and Chuck toured with her. We showed her boilers. We took her around the whole building. She had never been here before, so she was really excited to see the building. She went over with us, you know, the process of building aid and how competitive it is. And we went through it and received funds in Summersworth for the Maplewood project. It's a very competitive process. The funds are so limited. They don't fund a lot of projects. Right now, she said all her funding for next year is spoken for at this point. So we're gonna have to have further discussions on whether or not a small project like we would do here would even qualify to even, you know, it is so much involved in applying to the funds. She wasn't sure that the size of this project would really be worth applying for. So we have to have further discussions on that. So that's why I'm on the CIP. So are you ready for this one?
Thank you. So related to that, you know, some of the things that you've talked about in the past as a board are related to the CIP items, but also how do you utilize federal funds? As you know, and we talked about this last time, Katie provided you a list, kind of an update on, you know, here's what you've received so far for, you know, the CARES Act, SRR 2, SRR 3. So we wanted to put that in, you know, put that in front of you again and say, are there some things on the CIP that might qualify for SRR funds that might help you to be able to fund some of these projects? But that's not your only funding source. There are other options, whether that's, you know, warrant articles, that's building it into your budget. There are, you have a capital reserve account. There are other grant opportunities. We've received a couple over the last week or so that could possibly help, you know, with moving some things forward. So Rich, when Rich and Katie and I met to talk about the budget, we brainstormed, looked at the CIP list and then looked at SRR funds and some of the other opportunities. And that's what I put in the memo that I prepared for you. And again, as I put on here, this is really a discussion. You know, it's a place to start the discussion. It's it's not, this is what we're saying you should do. This is not, you know, it's nothing more than that. So I want people to understand, like, this is what we're doing. I will say to you, though, that I did receive a notice from the Department of Ed saying you have not submitted your SRR plan, your SRR 3 use of funds plan. And we were gonna talk about, we talked about it briefly at your last meeting. But I do need to put in something. That's a requirement to be able to utilize the funds. And it's a requirement that the state have all districts submit these plans. So I'm going to need to move this forward sooner than later. So in the memo that I prepared for you, you know, as we've talked about before, but just as a recap, your SRR 3 funding is just under $157,000. Those funds can be used for a number of different things. There's a 20% set aside for the academic impact of lost instructional time. And you have used, you know, those funds for, you know, literacy support. You know, you can use summer school. There's a lot of different things that you can use those for, among many other things. And then you also can use them for the, what the first bullet there, the continuous and safe operation of in-person learning. So that's where we start talking about ventilation. It's not gonna pay for your boilers, but it could pay, it certainly would help pay for your, the ventilation that you've talked about last year. However, you don't have enough, unfortunately. As Katie said, we were really hoping that that the building aid opportunity would be able to fill in some of the gap. And as she described, it is a competitive process. There's a, there's a rating scale of projects. Unfortunately, we had some things happen in Summersworth that day. So I was not able to come down and join the conversation that day. But having gone through the process before, it is, there's a lot to it. And again, that's our job and we will certainly support going forward with with an application. But just know that there's, it may not come to fruition. So we just wanted to be upfront about that. So when Rich and Katie and I met, we started looking like, how could we at least start the conversation to move things forward? So if you look at the second page of the memo that I prepared for you, we present two options, three options, I should say. And again, nothing here is is set in stone. There's nothing here again, just for discussion purposes. So the first option that we that we thought, okay, looking at that list of CIP items, that you could use SRR funds, capital reserve, you know, possibly a warrant, powerful and putting these aside in your in your budget to to replace the the entire project that you talked with EEI about last year. And again, you would have to bid that out. There's an RFP process. It's not just, I call up Mike Davy and say, hey, we're ready. It's it, there's a whole list of things that you need to do to be, to prepare for that. And that takes months. So we are gonna be looking sooner than later, if you want to move something forward, to be able to have the go-ahead so we can get the work done that needs to be done in preparation for the votes that will be coming up. Again, it's not gonna pay for everything that you need to do. But you also can use the funds to support the learning loss pieces. And again, we've talked about some of that before. Option two is kind of taking things in a little bit different direction. In our conversations, even though we know ventilation is a is a concern, one of the other concerns that rises right up to the top of the list is the boiler plant. And I know that's something that you all have talked about before, concern about the age and, you know, we, it's one of those things that it's great while it's working. And when it's not, then then it doesn't. And as you know, as things get older, like a car, you know, the parts get harder to replace. It's harder to find them. And, you know, it may last for another five years, 10 years or five days. You just don't know. And I, you know, I don't try to be alarmed, but you just don't know, especially as things get older. So one thing we thought about, well, you have a sizable amount in your capital reserve account that perhaps maybe that's a project that you could consider moving forward with. You know, again, that's, again, Katie can talk about some of the detail around moving that forward as a warrant article to secure some of those funds. And then again, you can continue with the learning loss pieces, again, knowing you have to have that 20% set aside in SRR. But you can use more than 20%. So when you see the, in, you know, 2B, when I have SRR 3, it's, you know, just under $71,000. That's, that's fine. You can use those SRR funds for what you, you know, what your need is. You don't just have to use the 20%. And then the other option, we said, well, maybe it's not the time to do any kind of capital improvements and maybe you want to put those resources into more learning loss type activities. And that could be a number of different things. So again, just a place to kind of start the conversation, you know, around using the SRR funds in some form or fashion and also to try to navigate through some possible movement on, you know, capital improvement projects. So hopefully this helps and it makes some sense. It took us a long time to talk it through. It's hard when you try to combine a lot of things sometimes and try to sort it through. But hopefully this, it helps. So if you want to add anything else or?
No, we just talked earlier about maybe at your next meeting in November, as we start our budget discussions, that maybe we can start trying to figure out if there's an option that we want to go with. Because like Lori said, it is a process to get some of these things in line, to get the RFPs out and if you wanted to move forward with some of these projects. So I think probably by your November meeting, we should go in some sort of direction, whatever that may be. It could be one of these or it could be something completely different. Because we did talk, maybe it's a combination of, you know, it could be anything. But this was just a place to start. Wow.
You know, we don't want people to have sticker shock from the numbers.
Yeah, this doesn't have to be a decision tonight.
Correct, right.
No, I, thank you so much for for doing this work and for putting this together because this really, it's a difficult decision, but these options, I think, are really, you know, what we should be looking at and debating about. And this is a good way to sort of understand what funding can be used for, what types of projects. I will say that I know the boilers are really urgent. They've, they've come to their end of life years ago. I know Dick helped us limp along with them for several years. But, you know, based on at least what I've heard, we are sort of playing with fire in terms of the boilers. So from my perspective, I think that is something we should be sure to consider doing for this upcoming budget season. And we do have a sizable amount in our capital reserve, which we've been building up for, you know, for that purpose. And then, you know, using the SRR 2 funds for learning loss and other other opportunities, maybe an outdoor bathroom or something like that is something that we could consider.
And those are good until 2024. So like you did this summer with your summer program, you could do that again for the next two summers too as well, you know, to the boost program like you did here. Again, if you did that option. One thing too, when you mentioned the capital reserve fund too, if you remember correctly, it would be there a cooperative session or public hearing, I can't remember which. A community member got up and asked the question of why do we have so much money in there? Why do we keep putting money in there? What are we using it for? So it might be a good year to consider using it where people are wondering what we're playing for.
Yeah, for sure. And then, you know, the elephant in the room is the ventilation system, which is just so much money. And we've gone back and forth several times on that. So those are my thoughts. I know we don't need to necessarily make a decision tonight. I think it's a good idea to discuss it at our, at our budget meeting next month. But what, what comments or questions do you guys have?
Was there any discussions about solar application in the boiler?
I know we talked about solar in regards to doing the whole thing. So we had some sort of a presentation about the whole HVAC system, ventilation, boilers, everything at once. And solar was part of that discussion. But I don't think that we looked at it only in regards to boilers or as a separate project.
And was it cross-probative or was it equal or did they use the numbers?
I don't remember. I think it was, a lot of times with solar, you, they want to give you a presentation where you can at least break even. And I think we weren't quite breaking even with it. But I, I may not be remembering that correctly. I'd have to go back and look at it. But that's certainly something that we could add to our RFP to get bids.
Because there's always, you know, there have been, you know, subsidies for solar and paybacks to encourage, you know, residents to do it. I mean, they take off school to do it.
Yeah, we can, we can definitely look into that.
Now you don't want to have a question. Just pick up the microphone. Katie, you might know this one. Were the boilers part of the EEI presentation at that one point?
They were, yeah. Yes, they were.
Okay, so that is rolled underneath that as well.
Yeah, so the 1.168 that Lori references in option one, that's what the, is that what the boilers were? Or is that just the HVAC or the same? Yeah, that was everything. Yeah.
So that was everything. That includes solar controls for the HVAC?
Solar was a piece of that. It included the PDC controls, the propane oil, removing the oil tank, ventilation, added insulation and new ceilings.
Okay, thank you.
So you'd switch from wood to propane, but it's not really type propane. It's not type gas and you think outside the building? Or is giant propane tanks?
I do have a question for either Katie or Lori. So if we did move forward with, say, just option one, hypothetically speaking, and we went through all the process of, you know, putting it on the warrant and, you know, we get a loan that covers 10 years or whatever, you know, so it's split up. And then we do submit an application to the state. Is there, could that act retroactively? Or does that have to be done before we put the warrant out there?
You can't start the project. Once the project's started, you can't get building aid back for it. So if, I know about, we ran into that in Summersworth. We had to wait to start making the project until we knew for sure we were getting building aid. Otherwise, we wouldn't get it because if you already started the project. So I don't know if that answered your question. I mean, there's no money for next year for building aid. So you'd be looking at waiting at least the next round when they do the budget again. And there's no guarantee that money will be placed into the budget for building aid.
Yeah, so if next year's money is already spoken for, so we'd have to, the following fiscal year, we'd need money. But SRR funds go through there, so we would still be covered with the SRR funds.
So January 1st of this year is you have to put an intent in if you're applying for building aid. And July 1st, I believe, is your application is due for the following year.
Got it. So it would be next year's budget season and we'd work on that if we were to elect to go that route?
Yes. Like I said, you wouldn't be able to start any of the project because then you can't get building aid if you already started.
Okay, thank you.
So, so in the case of Summersworth, do you put in, you know, requests every January 1st for building aid?
No. This was the first time we have done it since, well, January 1st was the last time we got it. So yes, no, we don't.
No, but do you think there's schools or districts that always put it in in the hopes of getting it and then they'll get lucky or, because it doesn't sound like there's a lot of money available.
There's not a lot of money available.
Well, there's also, there's also a lot of need, to be quite honest with you. I mean, there's a lot of aging schools. The building aid had a 10 or 12-year moratorium. So they didn't fund any projects. The state didn't for a long time. And so now they're playing catch-up. You know, the concern, even though, you know, a million, $2 million looks like a lot of money. It is, but it also, in the scheme of the projects that they're looking at, like again, the one that we did in Summersworth, it's about a $4 million project. And we had to, I don't want to say just add things to, you know, to complete, but we needed to have a substantial project. I'm not sure, and again, I don't know if Amy spoke any differently about whether this would be substantial enough to, you know, to make, you know, the cut in the, because there's this whole rating system that you have to go through, so.
And one thing she described to us when she was here, so say there were five projects that got funded in the current year. And three of the projects went forward with their warrant articles and they got approved, but the other two failed for whatever reason. She said those might get carried over into the next budget cycle. So you're already got two projects already in there for the next time somebody else applies. So you may, even if we apply, there could be other projects already ahead of us because their warrant articles failed and then they get pushed into that.
So they don't distribute the money that the towns were rejected?
No.
They, they hold that money and take it to the next year and maybe give it to that town or not?
Right. And then it's a waiting system like Lori said, like all the projects are in. You get placed on a waiting system and they, they might only take two projects. If one project is for the whole amount that's given the budget for building aid, then that's the only project that's gonna get funded that year.
So it does sound like if you, if you submit something every year, you might get lucky.
I would encourage everyone to play Keno because that's how they're funding building aid right now. So just throw a little plug for Keno, but yeah.
I mean, we can certainly, we could put in our intent, I think, for January 1st so that at least the intent is in there. And then if we don't decide not to put the full application in in July, then we could. And then if we don't decide not to put the full application in in July, then we could, I think, do that.
You, you certainly could. I, I will say though, we, we would definitely want to look for, because I think you would need, I don't know if she talked about, you know, the, the, the support from the town coming in the war, you know, the commitment. So that if you, if you receive the funding, that's one of the challenges with this process is trying to align town voting processes with the state's approval. A lot of times, they're happening at the same time. And it's, and it's a challenge for communities that, that, that know that they need to have the vote to be able to move things forward. I dealt with that in my prior school district and it, and it's, it's very, very challenging.
I think that helps us on the Summersworth side too because it's a city form of five members of the town, so that it was able to move through that process much after.
So, so I'm not, I don't want to discourage you from, from considering building aid, but I just want it, we just want it to be realistic that it may not be the, the, the thing we were hoping that might be able to put the funding forward. So that's why we thought, well, because we talked it through, looking again at option two. Boy, was it really the concern if we can move that pace forward and that takes away from the buildup of funds that you have in the capital reserve. But maybe that's the place to start for now. Rebuild that capital reserve. Um, but I don't know. I mean, it's just, it's, it's tough because it's just, there's just not enough money in any one place to, to make this happen.
We did though, as Mark and Lori mentioned, received two grant opportunities, this is two. There was a seed grant, I think it was up to $8,000. You have to do a 20% match. We could apply for that. I'm getting clarification on the timeline though, because I think if the project would have to be completed by the end of this year is what it looked like to me. But it may be something you could apply. I don't know if they do it every year. And then Amy Clark did give us, um, the USDA offers grants or leases for these types of projects, so we're looking into that.
The children's are prioritized, but boilers when it comes to our capital reserve fund, but that still leaves us with what we didn't talk about with plan for SRF soon, right? So is there like a deadline that they need to submit our plans to?
Uh, they want it at the end of August. So, you know, they, they've come to Lori, they will, will get, I mean, and again, I, I want, they have a timeframe and I, that I completely respect, but I also respect the timeline that you all have and the, the conversations that you need to have. So, I mean, so, and we know that, and from what our experience has been with, with these plans is that they're fluid. So we could put in something that says, at this point, we're going to commit the funds to the learning loss pieces and we can identify some of that. And then if you make a different decision, then you can, you can adjust that. Again, you have to have that 20% set aside, but, but I didn't want to, and, and we've had conversation about it, but I think we definitely, there's a, there's a large piece of, you know, of, of input from the community and of course, that's your, you represent the community. So we wanted to have the conversation with you as a board. Uh, I didn't feel like it was Richard's responsibility or mine solely, solely to, to put this in on your behalf. So we wanted to have the conversation. And you remember, last month was a tough month, so we really didn't want to get into the details of the, of this. So here we are in, in October, but I, it would be great to get it submitted in the next week or so.
Well, to Mike's point too, um, the SRF3 funds can go into 2024. So, you know, if we ended up with option two to address the boilers and then plan to still use some of the SRF3 funds in the next year or two to try to get the other HVAC items taken care of, then that maybe gives us more time to, to apply for some of these other funding sources and grants.
Cause they, the seeds funds are, they have been available for, I mean, it's a, it's only one school in New Hampshire, which is, again, it's crazy. And again, like you said, you just keep putting in hope that your term comes up. Um, you know, and again, I'm not familiar with the USDA. We just received that information a couple of days ago, so.
It's grant and the sense they all want to, uh, down that way.
Yeah, I, I for one would be in favor of, you know, generically saying we're going to put some money towards the learning loss, but also we're going to put money towards the HVAC system. Cause I mean, we gotta get EEI back in here before we can make, you know, we have people that weren't part of that conversation. So we, we really kind of need them to, to come in and help to educate some of the new board members and, and see where we're at. Cause I mean, yeah, the boilers are definitely a priority, but the whole HVAC system is also, you know, that. We pushed it off last year, but we were pretty close last year to, to putting that in, so. I, I would say we can generically put something forward that says SRF3 going towards HVAC, SRF2 to learning loss initially. And then, you know, we can adjust that as we go. But I would, I don't know, I would suggest that maybe we get EEI back here in November if that's the way we want to go. EEI is the company that did all the, the workup for HVAC system and everything. And they, they presented us with options and how we could actually, you know, get funding as well and how we could present it to the town.
Like consulting firm?
Yeah, they do, how would you describe it?
They're an energy services company?
So they, they do consulting, but they all, and planning, so they could, and I think that's part of what they did before was they came in and looked at and created a plan, at least a tentative plan for you, um, identifying what your needs, potential needs were. And then, um, they, if you selected them, we would have to go through to be able to use the federal funds. Cause we did, had to do this in Summersworth. You go through an RFP process and they would bid on being your energy company. And then you would work with them to execute the projects. So they actually do the construction, or the installation, if you will, on the ventilation project. So, so they're, they're kind of all in one, uh, which is nice. And then they sub out, obviously, with electrical and things all on that line. But, but yeah, that's, that's them. But we certainly, I'm sure, I talked with Mike Davy a couple of days ago and I know they're, they certainly would be very interested in coming back and having a conversation with you, just to inform you. I mean, obviously they'd love to be selected as your vendor, but, but this is also something that, you know, that's near and dear to them and that's part of the service that they provide is just helping to educate as well about what your options are. Uh, the other thing we haven't really talked about is leasing. You know, there's a performance lease option as well. And so that might be something that you would explore as well to lease part of this. And if you, you know, if you look at the quote that, that Mike gave you last year, there's potential savings. And so they look at, that's what performance contracting is. They look at, if your performance is stronger, it's going to reduce your energy costs. And that the idea is depending on the type of project that you have, that you come almost not cost neutral. We had one of those projects, was that at Maplewood, I think? Um, where the, the ventilation system, because of the rebates and the energy saves, was, was cost neutral. So, you know, Katie took all those expenses from the energy line and put them over to the lease. So it, it, it's, it's, it can be an option, but then you're committed to, like, you know, I think that term is 15 years. So that comes with decisions that have to be made as well. So, so there's all sorts of options. I mean, the nice, the, the best option would be free money that you can just, you know, pay for all these things and then you, then you can go and you don't have those longer term commitments. But that, but the performance leasing is also another option. And Mike could just kind of lay out all of that for you if that's what you wanted to.
And if you had given the options to like year one, you could do just this amount. Year two, you could do this piece of the project if you didn't want to do it all in one year as well.
Yeah, ours unfortunately didn't have that cost neutral bottom line because our, we've already made so many upgrades to efficiency and things. So unfortunately it wasn't, there was some savings on energy, but it wasn't canceling anything out by any means, so.
There were some rebates too that you get from like ever source or you can tell you that utility company was that.
And they're included in the total?
Yes.
I mean, on behalf of our, he has requirement for the federal funds, we would have to, you know, end such a large order.
Yeah. Anything else for kind of people listening?
I would like to be able to submit to the state to use a fund. And so if, if you're buying with me and I can get, I can work with Rich and Katie around adding more, sorry, forgot. Adding more detail as far as, we're going to work on our game here. That we can work on, you know, adding a little detail to, to that. Um, and, you know, again, it's going to focus on summer. And again, it can, it can change. Cause your needs, you may find, you know, as Rich was describing before, I mean, your kids are, are get, still getting used to a, a regular school day. So maybe there's some other things that you want to do. Um, you know, and I don't know what those things might be. That would be the conversation we'll have. But, but if I can move that forward, that would, that would be great. And then the state's happy. We've, we've made that commitment and then can move forward. So we'll work together and again, I'll, I'll provide you a copy of the plan in your next packet, um, so you can see. But it will be focused on the learning loss pieces. And we could certainly add, you know, our intent is to utilize these funds for the safe operation of schools and looking at an HVAC project. And again, doesn't commit you to anything, but at least says this is on our radar, if that's okay. And then if you, if you would like, I can certainly ask Mike Davy if, to come back and ask him to present to you again. You know, just a little bit more about kind of a general overview of performance contracting and, and some pieces that he's seen in the building. Um, and then you can, you have a little more information about, about where things are at. Cause even though I don't think the scope of what you have here has changed, but he can talk to you about changes that, that COVID has, you know, availability of equipment and when a project could happen. And, you know, just some of the cost increases that you would, might incur. So it's, you know, I think it might, it would be helpful to give, you know, to help you with that information.
He also works closely with Amy Clark too from the state, so he might have more insight on other projects that are in the building aid queue as well. So he might be able to give her some more information on that as well.
Yeah, I think that would be very helpful to have him come back, um, you know, as, to help all of us, especially some of the current members who didn't see the original presentation and help us kind of get our heads around, um, the scope, like you said. And thank you Katie and Lori for putting this together. I know this is a huge amount of work and really very helpful for us trying to make these types of decisions.
No, they're not easy.
No.
They're not easy.
Okay, I think we're ready to move on. Um, let's see. Oh, Thursday AM, last name too much. I thought we were going to move on to something easy.
No, this is not easy. Do you want me to speak for that?
Yes, please. Just, you know, do you have any updates since the last talk?
Okay, Katie and I will probably tag team this one as well. We, we work closely together. Um, so I know, and again, you know, I don't have all the history with, with this. Uh, so I've been playing catch-up as, as I've, I've become, you know, superintendent of the district. And so, and Erin, you and I had had a conversation about, you know, is there still an option? So what we're talking about is a, a late start Thursdays for Marshawn Middle School and High School. And there's, there was a busing contract that, we're busing RFP that went out last spring. Um, cost came in much higher than what was anticipated because of the way that it was quoted. And you'll stop me, correct me if I get this wrong. So there was some reworking of that to change it from one tier or one run with five buses that, that did the, all the runs every day to two tiers, which is two runs with three buses. So that comes with a cost savings, but it also comes in a cost of service. And, you know, whether bus routes are longer, you have less flexibility, you know, so it comes with all of those pieces. But it was more cost effective for what you had budgeted for. So that was last spring and, you know, there was some discussion and I think we talked about this last time about, you know, having the kids continue to arrive at Marshawn Middle School and High School at the same time on Thursdays as they do on the other days and that supervision would be provided. So we moved forward with all of that. And I know that there was some folks that that, there was some breakdowns and some communications um, around what the final decision was. Then we talked about that last month. And so the supervision is in place, the bus is running, you know, that had some impacts on, for RGS as well and Rich had to work through all of that. Um, but it was there. But I, I know in conversations that there's still some, is there still an option to explore a later run? So I had a follow-up conversation with, I've had several, and Katie has as well, with the bus company. And their challenge right now is that they would, they're, they're very thrilled that they have the staff that they have and that they have been able to meet the regular bus run needs. They are struggling with anything beyond that at this point. They, um, the staffing and the busing and the physical buses alone are, are things that would need lead time to be able to put that in place. And so in my conversation with Chris Tab, we talked about the earliest that something could probably be put together would be, um, the spring semester, so like late January. So, so that's a consideration. If, and I put an asterisk next to that, if they can find the staff to have, you, you've got staff that are running, because you still have the other routes and you would need two buses to make this happen. So, you know, can you find two people for one day a week? That's a, that's, that's, I think it's going to be a challenge. So it would be at your rate per, your daily rate, which is, you know, $420 a day per bus. So, you know, at 800, you know, $40 a day to do this one run, um, you know, as for this one day, on these two buses. So, you know, it totals out to about, for one Thursday, I've estimated it at 18 Thursdays, around $15,000. So, or actually 15 for one, I think it was, 30 for, for both buses. So is it doable? Maybe, you know, you'd have to find obviously the funding, all of that. Um, the bigger concern, as I said, is just being able to staff it and, and having the, the physical buses available. So I, I, you had asked me to, to, to find out that information, so that's, that's what I was provided. I don't know if there's anything else you want to add. It's pretty much, that's what it is. We did talk about, you know, is this a conversation that, you know, we kind of, we keep the things in place for this year as they are, even though I know for some folks that's less than ideal. Um, and then look to re, uh, reopen the negotiation or you do an addendum to the contract um, and plan for it for next year. So that, you know, for a student can figure out how to staff it and then have a busing available that's needed. Or you may go in a different direction. I know we've had some conversation about is this an option that Marsh would, would like to, is they run their own buses? I, I don't know if that, that's another whole conversation, uh, but that's a possibility perhaps to explore. So, but anyway, again, like with other things, many options to score, no, no one, right, wrong direction. Um, that's what I.
Well, thank you very much. That's exactly what I think we wanted to know. Um, you know, is it possible? And it sounds like it's maybe possible, sort of.
I would say that's it, yeah.
It's an if. And how much would it cost? Um, so 30 grand for, uh, one day a week for those, those late start students is, is seems like a lot.
Are we about the students we're talking about yet? Because the reality is kids, if, if we're talking about 50 kids, let's say, is that, I would think it's the seventh and the eighth and maybe the ninth grade. Someone said don't try. They probably know my home school and I have a class and sit around for an hour and talking to their friends. It's quite a schedule. Is anyone complaining about it? Is anyone complaining about it?
I don't think we've had any complaints.
Kids don't care about that, actually. And then the older kids are driving, because they're old, you know.
Yeah, since, when this whole sort of situation came to light, there was, there was definitely some complaints, but I don't know that we've had any since.
We haven't had any.
I think it was more about communication at the beginning, that it wasn't communicated, I think that was the biggest complaint, that they weren't aware of it.
Okay, so now we're aware. The older kids are driving, they'll take their sibling, maybe they'll take their neighbor. So that'll cut down.
There's definitely some carpooling going on, that's, that's what we're doing in my family. You know, not everybody can do that, and like you said, they have the option to go to school earlier.
With the bus, with the bus.
On the bus, right. But, you know, we just, we made a commitment to look into it and to figure out, you know, what the cost would be.
Does state hold the standard, you can spend $30,000 to run a bus so the kids can go in an hour and a half? I don't know. Think about it.
Good point.
Let's wait till, it's working right now, right? Kids are going to school early, they spend an hour doing nothing. Really? What's this, is that what's going on?
Extra hours sleep.
Go ahead, Mike.
I, I agree with what Shelley's saying, I mean, I, I just, we don't, you know, we don't have this outcry over here, there's nobody in the audience to talk to this unless somebody is here to speak to this. I think we did our due diligence and we moved forward. It's not, there is an $8,000 savings though, it costs $8,000 for free supervision.
True.
So it wouldn't be 30, it'd be 22, but still that's a pretty high number, yeah.
One minute.
Yeah, I'm with you.
And one thing to note, our supervision, we did commit to that with Marshwood, and one of their things was if they were, if they were gonna do it for you, then we had to commit to it for the year because they had the higher staff in order to do that. So that's gonna be a commitment, whether or not you switch to the bus or not, we're gonna have to commit to that for this year. So you're gonna have that cost on top of the 30, just to make you aware of that.
Thank you. So it's not savings. I don't see a call back, I mean, I'm not hearing anything.
Yeah, unless you just decide to change it for next year and stop the Marshwood supervision and build it into your budget.
I haven't seen anything in my, I see you want to forward email, I haven't seen anything. I would, for one, would need, say we look at it and unless it comes back up, I'm good moving on.
Karen, did you have some?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, I'm sorry. So if, it sounds like you're wrong, but if we did add an extra two buses within you running more new ones, because kids attend that study hall and be supervised, if that's what their parents want to ban them running later, or if their parents are going to have to shift gears again and make sure that they're younger, older students are supervised, if they're not comfortable leaving at home. Okay. And then also, this is something that we could look at again later, and Aaron, we talked about adjusting the end of the RGS school day to, because this is also impacting the RGS students, it's not something we're very complacent about, but there are RGS students that are staying there later because their boss, because their boss is off to come later due to the sharing of Marshwood, and I'm just wondering about the favor from between the, the other thing, understanding if students are sitting in the chair at the moment.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that would be a negotiations discussion.
And first student is pulled to that conversation, you know, to having that conversation about, you know, how, how we invest in having this, because they know there was some confusion, I think, last spring, and they wanted, they wanted to be good partners and good neighbors, you know, in this process, so they're certainly open. Sometimes with groups, you're locked in and there's really not a lot of flexibility, but you know, that's not been the case with our student at all.
I actually meant for, if we were to change the length of the school day.
Oh, oh, okay.
Is that, is that a negotiations issue?
Oh, contract.
Yeah.
We, we did talk about that briefly, so we could talk about that during non-public afterwards.
But I think that's where that, that conversation has to come in.
I'm just wondering if that would be a, maybe a reference that I don't want to compromise previously.
Definitely, yeah.
It goes off the next.
Yeah, good point. Shelley.
So have there been complaints, Mr. Harcourt, about kids remaining here and then just giving?
The biggest complaint is when the buses are running late, and it's not really a complaint, we get phone calls from concerned parents, wondering where their kids are.
Because we had the same thing with summers for preschool, that our junior high kids, if anybody was eager long enough, they used to have to sit because Rollinsford kids went first, so the elementary bus went first, and so this seventh, eighth, the seventh and eighth graders, again, sit in the cab or whatever for 15 minutes and then, I think we're a small district, we have to be flexible, we can't be spending money to placate, these are kind of like, we've very, we've very covered, don't you feel that kids are on the bus, they come home 10 minutes later than you know?
Well, so I think, I think what we're kind of thinking about is, we are spending a little bit extra for supervision for those kids after school. And we've talked for years about the possibility of extending this whole day by 10 or 15 minutes. And if we were to do that, it would help kind of solve that problem, right? Because those 15 minutes would be still in for.
You'd pay more at the end of the day.
You'd pay more.
Because it's difficult, you'd be paying the teachers versus that.
It's a discussion, it's a discussion to be had.
Yeah, I think there's specifics of that discussion we could have in non-public. We do have information on that, so share that during non-public, if everyone's good with that.
Okay. I think that's good on the busing, thanks very much for looking into that and getting that data for us, that's very good to have. Okay, our next item. This is, no, this is easy, this is easy. Adding visitor orientation information to the agenda, and where this came from is that, you know, myself as in kind of a fairly new board chair, I needed to sort of go back and review this for my own edification, you know, what the different sections or comments for visitors really mean, you know, what's allowed if there's second, fourth conversation type of thing. So we do have a policy on that, which were sent to us, and I was just thinking that it would be a good idea to just kind of add it on that second page of our agenda, so that any visitors who come, who maybe aren't familiar with, you know, the procedures or haven't spoken, had a meeting before, can just use that as a reference and just to kind of provide a little bit of more info on the agenda. Nothing, so we're talking Marshall in, it's a little lengthy, so I'd like to maybe read it a little bit and send it to all four of you and one that we are going to be, you know, that, or that's why. I think that's a great idea. Any comments or, or do you see the end of that, adding that? Great. So I will send that, I will pull it up and, and also that to you in a week. Sending that along.
Okay.
Let's keep going. Let's keep going. Now we're up to our budget update, Katie.
Yes, so our budget, we've been giving it to you since we did your packet, we've encumbered all the salaries and benefits for staff, so those are side by side. One thing I wanted to bring to your attention is I did receive the enrollment and September invoice from Harcourt for just a regular base tuition for students. I could have been happy, as far as she outlined, the change in enrollment, there's been a significant drop in enrollment, so in our budget, we anticipated 152 students last year in June and 147. We had added a few students in for students that we knew of that were attending Marshwood where parents were paying, they were sixth graders and were gonna become seventh graders, so we anticipated that budget for them. Well, as of this September enrollment, I think in your packet it was 138 students, but when they sent the invoice, it was down another three, so we're down to 135 students there. So that is a decrease of 17 students based on what we budgeted, so it's a significant savings as of right now, about $195,000. However, if that is said, we just received the first special ed invoice the other day, Nancy's currently going through it, and we always verify it to make sure that the kids are there, their services are accurate before we encumber it, so I haven't encumbered that yet. Once we encumber that, we'll know exactly what the savings is, because I know that there were a couple of students that we had, new, new special ed students, some had, you know, higher needs than others, so once we encumber that, we'll know for sure the savings, but that is a significant savings. I mean, the good news is going into your budget process for next year, we can maybe decrease the amount that we have going in. So that's in your packet, I'm just showing you the details of this. We also received our invoices from Primax, that's our insurance company for our workers' comp insurance and our car payment liability. They did issue a premium holiday this year, so that resulted in above $4,500 savings in that area. And then just to note, we did have, we did budget for the retirement payout, about $35,000. We paid that out of last year's end of year balance, you guys approved that at the end of the year, so we do have that as a savings as well. And then on the revenue side, as most of you know, we get money from the state, our advocacy funding from the state every year. So in November each year, they give us an estimate of what we're to budget for going into our budget season. And then in September, they revise that number to give us what they're actually going to give us. So since we did the estimate in November, a few things have changed, we submitted our end of year data in June for our actual students and our average day in membership. And then HB2 was a law that was passed where they took the ADM for our enrollment as well as our pre-reduced students, and they took the higher of the number between the 1920 school year and the 2021 school year due to COVID and the decreases in enrollment, so they gave us the higher of that number. So that resulted in an increase of funding of about $93,000. So what happens with that is it's just going to get adjusted during the tax rate setting and that amount is gonna go back to reduced taxes. So that will happen when the tax rate gets set, so I just wanted you to be aware of that. And that's all I have. Any questions? We need to see. And that'll get adjusted as the year goes on, it's super early in the year, so some things may not really come to them.
Okay, we are up to new business, and tonight we have a couple of first readings of policies. One is the acceptable use policy, and the other is the residency that Maury talked about Those both looked fine from my perspective on first reading, does anyone have any comments or questions? Okay, so we'll vote on those next time.
Sorry, I did have one, I was just trying to find it. Want to start at the beginning? Shouldn't it give me a microphone? No, I think it's just a typo or, yeah, so under the resident, admission of resident students, the second paragraph, it says illegal resident of a student, should that say illegal residence of a student? What are we trying to say?
I think it's supposed to be or.
Nope, I guess, yeah, I'm just confused by the start of that.
The first, the first paragraph, yeah, yeah, that first line in the first paragraph.
Yeah, residence, you're right.
Yep.
Did it say residence?
Yep, good catch.
All right, yeah, I had to read it like more than once to figure out what I'm trying to say.
Yes, it should say illegal residence of a student.
Thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
I did read it, it's proof.
Do you have any other, any short? Thank you. And we have, under all business, we have the second reading of the B E D G policy on minutes, which again, finds me in the input. Okay, we'll accept a vote to accept that, uh, change policy. A motion, rather?
I motion to accept a B E D G as written.
Motion from second round, Harry, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, motion carries. Okay, we have some upcoming school activities, a lot of which Rich already touched on, some food clinics, picture day, which was rescheduled. Fourth grade, grade day, festuary field trip.
I forgot to mention that in my report. Yes, that's also an outdoor trip, fully outdoors, there's one section where they go into, it's a sort of a wildlife type of section of the area, but they secured that facility for themselves during the time that they were there, there might be other groups on the property, but.
That's great.
Again, similar to the, the summer trip, so it'd be a nice little inquiry type of field trip for them.
And I see Thanksgiving lists it on here, it's way too early to be talking about that. Our future meeting dates are here on the agenda, and I would just note that for the next two months, we are meeting starting at 5:30 in order to talk about budget planning. So we'll meet at 5:30 for budget and then have our regular meeting at 6:30, and that's for both November and December. And I should have the budget, I'll email you all to let knowing if you're coming to pick up your budget binders prior to that meeting, so that. Great, thank you. Do you have any closing comments from visitors tonight?
To piggyback on the field trips, Five Six has been going to the river, as you know, to the Salmon Falls River, and Lindsay Lanzar takes a course every other year with Fishing Game, and Fishing Game provides waders and nets and tubs, and kids go in the river, in the waders, and collect samples. And if you go on the Fishing Game's website and look up Rollinsford, the data for the Salmon Falls River has been collected by Rollinsford students.
Oh.
So it goes by year, so ours this year isn't currently in there yet, but from years past is in there. And again, every kid went in the river, and no one flooded waders. Lindsay said she has never had anyone flood waders.
That's awesome.
So, yeah, it's really, really cool, because they count macro invertebrates that they scoop up in the nets, and two years ago when I did it with her, two of the girls identified an invasive species plant, and when the woman from Fishing Game came, she verified that.
Wow.
So it was the milfoil that's been around, but they were able to identify it, and the kids just love it. And we incorporate Rollinsford history in it with the mills, and, you know, why are communities built on a river and, you know, but the kids really love it, we do math, the Fishing Game provide us with meters to read, we don't do salinity, to do turbidity, temperature, pH, there's several things that they measure. And the kids take measurements and then they learn how to use the meters, and that's really cool, it's a really nice trip. We went, we went down several times, so.
Yeah, that's fantastic, my daughter, as you know, was involved and had so much fun, she learned so much, and was excited to come home and tell us about it, and tell us what she had learned, and of course, you know, wearing the waders.
Well, I have to say, this year was better than the previous year that I did it with them, because that year, they, there was only men small, so some of the kids that were rather small to put on men small, they were like. Well, this year there were some kid sizes, there was like a more of a spread of sizes, so it wasn't quite so funny.
Very cool.
But it's, it's real, I mean, they had to count the macro invertebrate, and then we came back, they identified, counted, and then we came back and determined that the Salmon Falls River is healthy. Of course, we can only do the edge, you know, we can't go into the middle of the river and do testing. But for the edge, it's, it's healthy, it's not terrible.
Good to know.
So, yeah.
Thank you, Lori. Any, any other comments tonight? Yes?
Celia Leopold, I have a couple of questions. One, does the outdoor, um, are there any outdoor items on the CIP to include the pavilion slash outdoor classroom that's been talked about in the past? Or the playground that is, now that the slide is sun-bleached in the tunnel, and it's getting brittle? So, and the kids are out there a lot, just worry about breakage of that. So I'm wondering if, um, any of those outdoor projects can go onto the CIP plan as well as indoor ones? Or if they're not already on there? I'm wondering if, um, any of the COVID funds could be put towards testing or providing materials for the school nurse to test to prevent learning loss? Because if she can do a test here at school, if a kid has COVID symptoms, is that feasible? Is it not feasible for our school district? Is it, should we be testing? I know some places test regularly to make sure COVID doesn't come through the door. Is that something that we could use some of the COVID funds for? And since we're in a substantial or high area right now, what is the threshold for going hybrid or remote learning?
There's a lot of questions, thank you. In terms of outdoor stuff, we're definitely talking about that during our, our budgeting discussions coming up. And I think, uh, that's, that's a good question about testing and whether that's feasible for us, so, um, we shall probably discuss that as well. Thank you.
Yep.
Other comments? Comments, uh, by board members?
Um, I was approached by some residents that they thought it would pay for substitute, and substitute, um, administrative work, these full-on. If only it was in our, um, we saw that. And that's just a full-on. Something, it may be something that gets forward in the distance.
Yes, that's definitely something that has come up, um, in the past, and is probably appropriate for our, our budget discussions. I think there is, well, I don't know if we need to get into it now, but, um, please. Yeah, we will definitely add that to our budget list. Yes, Rich?
I'm not a board member, but, um, in relation to what Shelley mentioned, there, I believe there's a policy in regards to substitute pay, so you may want to, um, if you're going to review that, make sure that if there's dollar amounts in the policy, that you bring that forward under future agendas.
Yes, thank you. Any comments? Thank you, everyone. Uh, we do have non-public tonight. Do we need to take a publishing case on public?
Yep.
Four?
All in favor?
One second.
Aye.
Did they say what for?
No, they didn't say.
What are you going on, non-public for? Excuse me?
What's the non-public for?
Negotiation.
Thank you.